I'd like to call the town of Wapins, your planning board meeting to order. We all rise for a pledge to the flag. All right, we have the... Secretary, perform a roll call attendance, please. Here. All right. All the members should have received the minutes from the June 5th meeting. If there's no discussion regarding the minutes...
Motion to accept.
Motion's made in second. All in favor? Aye. Okay. First item on the agenda this evening is an adjourned public hearing for Bertera subdivision. Entertain a motion to open the adjourned public hearing. Okay, a motion may it say it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Is anybody here regarding that?
Yep.
Guys, come on up. Okay.
They got a seat on the camera.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that's kinda... Yeah, I mean, that's good. That's... All right. So, I guess we've... This has been kicking around for quite a while. And I guess we have some open items still left to address here.
Yep.
So with that, as well, most of them, again, they fall with the engineer and the planner. So why don't I just open up to have the planner discuss the open items on his letter? But you've received both letters from the planner and the engineer. Okay. All right. So Malcolm, why don't you discuss the... What you have left that still needs to get addressed here?
Sure. So the biggest one, the... An open-ended item with the last time that you were here was the calculation of the area of disturbance. There was some discrepancy in that. Since then, the plans have changed. It looks like there's going to be more activity. But I did not see an updated area of disturbance, and I'm curious if the EAF has been updated to reflect any changes to the plan.
Yeah, the EAF has been updated. I will resubmit and distribute that.
Our other items, I mean, you're going to need to apply for wetland permit from the town. Have you had any correspondence with the DEC since we last saw you?
No.
Okay. Well, I'll take a look at the EAF when you resubmit it. If it's just the bats, it's just the bats. I know that that note is on the plans.
Yep.
If we're flagged for anything else, we're gonna need to get some word from the DEC.
Okay, understood.
I think that's it for me. You got anything?
John had a comment letter June 13th. Really wasn't anything in there. It's just reiterating what the applicant, you know, was stating about their... But they have a submission into the Health Department. Malcolm talked about they're making the wetlands permit, that they'll be making application for a demolition permit for the garage. I assume that demo permit would be a condition of approval because you'd want the garage down before the map is signed, right? Okay. And then the applicant indicated that the Fire Prevention Bureau's comments have been addressed, but will need a sign-off from them? That their comments are taken care of. And that was it from John's letter. Jim, I don't know if you have anything?
I don't have anything at this point.
So I mean, at this point, I mean, it's kinda... We're really kind of just waiting, I guess, on your office to kind of finalize everything. I mean, how long do you think it's gonna take to get some of these items addressed?
What would the Fire Protection Bureau prefer to address their comments? Would they wanna turn around plan?
Yeah, I don't... Off the... It's been so long now. This has been going on for quite a while. I think the last... I think the last two or three times you're on the agenda, nobody showed.
They made comments already.
The secretary has it real quick. Yeah, need adequate turnaround at existing house for fire apparatus. Okay, so that hasn't been added yet, right, to the plan? For the existing?
There's the existing driveway here. The owner often has trucks turned around in this area. Does it need to be a paved area?
Well, it needs... Yeah, it needs to be inadequate. You know, it has to be... Yeah, it has to be a solid surface, you know, some type of... Yeah, even if it's item four or whatever, but something that a truck's not gonna sink into. Yeah, so... So I guess that's the only other item then that's not on the... You know, that wasn't described in the two letters. So as soon as we resubmit with that and this, we'll... Actually, we have to adjourn this, I guess, to another date because it'd be a little premature to close the public hearing. So with that... Oh, yeah, I'll do it too. Okay, so, yeah, so before we adjourn the public hearing, is there anyone here in the room that wishes to speak in regard to the Bertero subdivision? Okay, seeing there's none.
Yeah, with the... Can we just ask the applicant a question real quick?
Yeah.
And I can double-check this at a later date, but you may know, the wetland, is that a Army Corps or a DEC regulated wetland?
So the wetland in here, I looked on partial access today. It was federal.
Okay. Okay.
So that means it's just, you know, our...
It's just a town. Yeah, it's just our wetland that they're gonna need a permit for.
And who flagged those?
Um, I don't know. I have them sent my...
Yeah, for some reason, I thought... I thought maybe they were flagged, weren't they, when we... I don't remember. That one was flagged?
Yep.
Okay. I remember something was. We did a field trip. Yeah, we did a field trip there.
Yeah, questioning that and wondering, yeah.
Like a year ago now. All right.
When you resubmit the EAF, can you give us everything that you have on those wetlands?
Yeah, of course.
When they were flagged most recently, et cetera.
Yep, of course.
Thank you.
All right, so if we adjourn this out, I mean, if they adjourn it out, probably until the 17th? How much do we have on for?
For the 5th?
Huh?
For the 17th?
Yeah, well, I guess the 5th. You have three items on the 5th? Hey, we have every... You think you'll have everything put together by the 5th? Yeah, I mean, the cutoff's gonna be...
The cutoffs are ready for the 5th. So depending, unless you can turn it around in a day or two, Malcolm needs enough time to review it.
All right, so let's put it off to the 17th then. All right. Somebody wanna make a motion to adjourn the public hearing to July 17th? Okay, motions may it say it. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we'll see on the 17th.
Thank you.
And if you can get everything clarified and addressed, we'll see where we go from there. Hopefully, we can move this along. All right, thank you. Okay. All right, our next item on the agenda this evening is an adjourned public hearing for Carmax Auto Superstore for site plan and special use permit.
Good evening. John Thatcher back again. I've got the entire project team here with our local land use, engineering, my client representative, as well as our lighting expert. Appreciate you having us here again tonight, continuing our discussion from the May 1st hearing meeting. And that meeting, the discussion was focused primarily on the traffic and excuse me, traffic and the need for a sidewalk. So our latest resuminal included documentation and addressed both of those issues. I'll let Karen speak here in a moment as to the technical aspects of that. And since our resuminal, we have received a review letter from H&amp;H as well as a letter from the Neighbor to the South. The H&amp;H letter, again, I'll let Karen speak to the technical aspects of that. The letter from the Neighbor to the South primarily focused on lighting and landscaping, particularly landscaping that would buffer our proposed development from theirs. As far as the lighting goes, they were raising objections to the requested waiver for the pole height. As we've discussed over the last year's worth of meetings and as we've had our lighting expert testify to, we've gone back and forth on this lighting plan, but ultimately, we have settled on a lighting plan that meets all aspects of your new lighting code from a foot candle standpoint to let zero light spill at the property lines. We have those bluebers that actually shield the point source of light, the color temperatures, meeting all aspects of the code with the exception of the waiver requesting for the pole heights. And as our expert has testified to, that actually does provide for a better design in terms of light pollution and the number of poles actually required on the site. And so we have him again here tonight, again, if any of you would like to discuss the technical aspects of that. But again, we are providing what he could testify to as a better lighting design when regard... In regards to lights built, we've heard no expert testimony to refute that. But again, we have our expert here if needed. And then the other aspect of that letter from the neighbor was regarding landscaping and the buffering between us and the Neighbor to the South. In there, there was a few key points. They were requesting a 10-foot landscape buffer and for the... Are provided plantings to be upsized in terms of more mature plans going in at the time of installation. The 10-foot buffer, we already have that on the plan, actually, so no issue with that. And this is the upsizing of the plantings. We don't really feel like it's warranted, but we're happy to provide that if necessary, if our board needs it necessary. So with that, I guess I'll turn it over and have Karen talk a little bit more about the hot topics from last time, the traffic and the sidewalk. And yeah, appreciate you having us here.
Thank you. Good evening. Karen Adenavsky, we're engineering for the record. And we've made a lot of progress and gathered some new information since the last meeting that was requested. The main points were pedestrian traffic and volumes, vehicle queuing at the intersection, and the possibility of a sidewalk along the frontage on Smithtown Road as well. So we did engage our traffic consultant. They went out in May, shortly after the last meeting, on days that were 70s and sunny, clear skies, no rain. So they were there on a Thursday, a Friday, and a Saturday. And they took observations and counts within the peak hours for both morning, evening, and then the Saturday peak hour. So on the weekdays, that was between the hours of 7:00 and 9:00 a.m., 4:00 and 6:00 in the evening, and then 11:00 to 1:00 on Saturday to determine the peak hour counts. So things that they documented and put within the report that we submitted were, first off, pedestrian volumes and traffic and what they saw as far as that goes. So they did find that in the peak hours there were four pedestrians... I'll go to the aerial view. So the main paths were pedestrians walking on the north side of Smithtown and taking what would be for them a left and heading north on Route 9. There was one observed, I believe, crossing the intersection, and one at the opposite side of Smithtown and Route 9, heading north. So that was what they did see in the peak hour. They did not observe any pedestrians in the evening peak hour or Saturday peak hour. So when they saw that pedestrian, the traffic was in the morning weekday peak hour. As far as vehicles, so I know that queuing at the intersection was a topic. And if a vehicle stack were to happen before the signal changes when people are waiting on Smithtown, how could that possibly impact our driveway? So we looked at that. So there's about 11 vehicles that can stack before they would block the driveway for vehicles heading west on Smithtown, looking to take that left into the first driveway closest to the intersection. The average queue was five to six vehicles in the morning peak hour, six to eight in the evening peak hour, and six vehicles on the Saturday peak hour. The queue did exceed 11 vehicles at a couple of points, which is outlined in the report, which was only two to three times in the a.m. peak. The evening peak saw it exceed at five, one day and two the other, and then four on the Saturday. But the traffic consultant did determine it would not impact this, or it should not. As less than four cars per signalized light change of the cycle of the light were heading westbound. So the report also documents very low volumes of vehicles heading west. The majority are heading east, and that's due to the observation that they can turn as they're heading south on Route 9 onto Osborne Hill before they would go and wait at the light to turn right and head westbound. So that's all documented in the report. And then lastly, we were asked, should the town deem sidewalks be required at this segment of Smithtown? What would that look like? So we did prepare and submit two different scenarios for that, should you deem one of them necessary. So when we saw the patterns from the traffic consultant, it's clear that people are walking on the north side of Smithtown because they're heading north on Route 9. That's where all the volumes seem to be, even though it was low, if anything. So we did go ahead and have a little bit more of the road and right-of-way surveyed just so that we could really see what that looks like. When you're out there, it seems flat and clear. So the first option was a proposed sidewalk on the north side of Smithtown. As you could see here, that would leave people generally where it appears they're walking. We also took the scenario, as was asked, of a sidewalk on our side of Smithtown, on the south side, which would be on our property due to the constraints of the right-of-way or even lack of right-of-way between the edge of pavement and the property line. So we modeled that here with this exhibit as well. It does have to take a couple of jogs, but we did that to accommodate the proposed stormwater within the easement. So that option was provided as well.
Okay. All right.
First, did you motion to open the public?
Yeah, I know, after a little discussion before we do that. Do you want to address any of your concerns in the letters, or have they all been addressed currently from the discussion?
No. I think all the issues and the proposed solutions have been adequately presented by the applicant. I know that we had discussed. Our traffic analysis came to similar conclusions. It's very rare that the first of the two entrances to the site is obstructed by queuing cars. When that is true, the queue doesn't seem to ever obstruct the second of the two entrances, and the lot is accessible by both entrances. I think that if the first was obstructed, people would enter in the second. And if they didn't, and if they chose to wait, it looks like the volumes are so low that you would not have a situation where cars back up onto 9, which is the concern, which is the biggest concern. And none of the queuing obstructs the entrance that the auto haulers are using to enter the site, which was the biggest concern of the board. The idea that one of those trucks would not be able to enter the site because of queuing. So the traffic analysis seems to address everything. The pedestrian activity... I'm not a specialist as to when the peak hours seem to be. I would imagine that pedestrian peak hours vary slightly from automobile peak hours. So we have a relatively small Snapchat of what that pedestrian activity is. But for an intersection with no crosswalks and no pedestrian infrastructure of any kind, either at the intersection or approaching it, I was surprised at how much pedestrian activity is occurring at that intersection. So I leave that up to the board as to whether or not that's a worthwhile investment for a sidewalk as presented. We have to... If it's on the southern side of Smithtown, they have to jog around some existing infrastructure that's there. But alternatively, that could be built out at the time of site plan as opposed to a sidewalk on the north side of Smithtown, which is largely conceptual, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's to the discretion of the board. We can talk about lighting if you'd like to. I think that we've talked about it at length over the course of the last year. But I'm happy to answer any questions if you have.
Okay.
We don't have any engineering comments on the current submission.
All right. All right, so at this time, we'll open up the floor for public comment. Entertain a motion to open the adjourned public hearing?
I'll make a motion to open it.
All right, motion may it say it. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, is there anyone here from the public that has any comments regarding the current application before us? Okay, seeing none. All right. What's the... So what's the board's feeling with the project at this point? We have the... Yeah, we have a couple of... Yeah. We want to... Let's discuss the sidewalk. That's the attorney. Oh. Well, 'cause he's gonna ask us a question in a minute. I could already tell. But before he asks any questions, I think we have... We do have some things that we need to discuss. One of which is the sidewalk. Do we wish to have the sidewalk put on that south side of Smithtown Road? You know, being seen that there's more pedestrian traffic than what was anticipated. So if we wanted to see that. And then the other item was the light poles. So the light poles are gonna be slightly higher than... And we can grant the waiver for the two feet. So... The 17 instead of 15.
But it's 19 in total.
What is it?
It's 19. It's a 17-foot pole on top of a two-foot foundation. The height of the light will be 19 as opposed to 15.
Right.
It's been heavily shielded, yeah.
Yeah, we've... Yeah, they've scaled it back. Okay. All right. So if the applicant agrees with that, we'll vote on the waiver, if they agree with the sidewalk issue.
I would... First of all, Richard O'Rourke, the attorney who's here, and of course, I won't speak because I'm an attorney, and that's why I'm standing here. Well, if I may, in terms of the pedestrian traffic, what we find remarkable is that those that are there, and we would respectfully disagree in terms of traffic, because it's like over a two-hour period. I think we had six people? Yeah, over a two-hour period. So that's three an hour. And they all walked, or they all, just about all walked on the north side. So I'm not so sure that that volume would necessarily suggest that the sidewalk should be built on the south side. If anything, it would appear as though it would make more sense for it to be built on the north side. And Steve Hudak is here from Carmax, and perhaps he has a word to say about that.
That was a question I was gonna ask. So I heard Malcolm say that it's conceptual, the northern sidewalk. Yeah, you surveyed it. We know it works from an engineering perspective, so what makes it conceptual?
Wouldn't we need to amend the air gas? Is it wholly within the right-of-way, or would it be using? Well, that's a different... That's a different story then.
So it's totally in the right-of-way as the applicant willing to build that sidewalk?
On the northern side?
I think we had expressed some willingness to participate.
Well, I think it would be our preference to build it on the north side because the expense of doing it on the south side of relocating all those power poles, it's a much more powerful to do on the north side.
So we offered... So we're offering the option. So are you willing to put it on the... So you'll do that as part of this site plan approval? Okay. Just may I assure my consultants, primarily my engineer, make sure he's okay with that?
Well, again, it's the first time I'm seeing it because I'm covering it now for John. But it looks like it's showing a flush sidewalk. And I don't think that that meets... I don't think that meets... If it doesn't have a curb to protect pedestrians... And, you know, when you install like a curb with a sidewalk, then you get into drainage because you're blocking the flow of water. So that brings up its own, you know, concerns. But there's... Because I've done a bunch of sidewalks that are flush because we didn't want to deal, you know, with drainage, and there's a DOT. Although this isn't a DOT road, on a couple that I've done on a town road, because of legal, like, concerns, you had to follow the DOT because if it's not a certain distance off of the edge of the road, I think it's called a pedestrian path. And it's not termed a sidewalk. Then if somebody, God forbid, got like hurt, it wasn't termed like a sidewalk, so... I think this needs to be, again...
So if the... Let's say the applicant was to widen the road, that extra four feet to the...
To right up against?
Up to the edge of the right-of-way. Is that... Would that suffice? And then it could be a... It could be just a striped lane for pedestrian traffic.
It's a sticky situation. It needs to be... It needs to be looked... I think between your office, like, and John, maybe before you make a decision, I think, again, I'm just coming in on it, looking at it. But from what I remember, it's gotta be... If it doesn't have a curb, it's gotta be seven, seven feet away from... I don't remember if it's from the white line or from the edge of the road.
I think here, they're pretty close. I don't think there's much of a... Yeah, there's not much of a shoulder.
Well... That's the other thing. The town's gonna... The town's gonna be responsible for maintaining it because it has to be... And I think it has to be plowed if it's gonna be used by the public. So... Has, you know, the highway superintendent been consulted and...
Of any public sidewalk?
Oh, that's right.
I don't think that there was a proposal to do a curb on the south side, so I'm a little bit confused by this. That's number one. Number two, as you know, the improvement that's being requested is something that's not caused by us. And I defer to your attorney to advise you in terms of legal ramifications of that. Our position would be, you know, we're willing to participate. I think Mr. Hudak, on behalf of Carmax, has said, "Look, we'll give you an escrow for $20,000 to study this." So, you know, we're trying to get across the finish line here.
Yeah, no, no, I understand. I gotta... I like to, you know, before we go further here, like to consult with legal counsel regarding this. Entertain a motion to go in executive session.
Second?
All right, all in favor? All right. Alright, let's go in there. Can we go in the other room? I need to speak with actually all the staff. Entertain a motion to come back into, uh, regular session. Alright, motion made, say it all in favor? Okay, alright, so. Went in, uh, just for the record, went into executive session to consult legal counsel and our professional staff regarding some issues. No votes were taken. And, uh, at this point, we're hopefully ready to finish up our discussion on this project. So, one of the things we did discuss back there is this whole sidewalk issue back and forth. And the most logical thing is to put it on the south side. Because everything that needs to be there is on that side. So, the ball is in, you know, in the applicant's court at this point. If putting in a sidewalk that satisfies, you know, the planning board's concern for that area. And that's something maybe you have to discuss, I'm not sure. But that seems to be the last issue before, I guess, we go forward here. So, is it something you need to discuss further or?
And, and just for the record, the sidewalk would be on, up to their property line?
Yes.
Within, within their property, up to.
So not into the Route Nine right-of-way?
And we'd have to have an easement. Have to be an easement too.
An easement in what?
To, to, to like allow, you know, the public to walk on it.
On the sidewalk?
Any questions? The liability of pedestrians in the sidewalk falls on who?
The property owner, uh, cause our current code, um, our current code has, um, a provision even if it's in the right-of-way, that it's the abutting property owner that's responsible. So whether it's in the municipal right-of-way or it's on private property, it's the responsibility of, in essence, the closest property owner to the sidewalk.
So is that to suggest if, if the property owner was named in a lawsuit along with the municipality? And it was liability found on both parties that, uh, there would be an indemnification required by the property owner to the town?
I don't believe our code requires that.
We may need to discuss that, but I just wanted to clear up two things if I may. And that is, obviously, there are two waivers that we're requesting. As you know, one of them is a waiver in connection with the, the light pole height. And, um, you know, our position with that is that the approval of the waiver of the, uh, the code, uh, designed pole height is not going to set a precedent. And the reason it will not set a precedent, uh, is because what we've proposed, with all the controls we have for supplemental, supplemental glare control, as well as, uh, the other provisions for movers and everything else. It's, it will, based upon our experts' testimony, um, provide, uh, more than sufficient, uh, and adequate, uh, protections in terms of any kind of white trespass. So I just wanted to make sure that's, to understand that. And obviously, you know, we produced a, our, our expert who is considered, uh, an expert in field. And, uh, you know, that's his opinion. And I'm not aware of any expert testimony that has refuted that. So, you know, that's the first waiver. The second waiver has to do with the, uh, the area of the controlled parking. As you know, we have an area where only employees of Carmax are permitted into that area. And just as there's other provisions in your code, and specifically section two forty, point nine six, uh, capital B, you do provide for a waiver ability when it, the employ, uh, the, the area of parking is segregated and it's for long-term or employee parking. So we're suggesting and respectfully requesting a variance so as to allow us to, to reduce, uh, the, um, dimensional issues in that controlled area. So those are the two.
And you're asking for a dimensional issue regarding the size of the parking space?
And the, the size of the aisle width as well.
And the aisle widths, right.
And the only people that will be operating cars in there.
Would just be employees of Carmax, correct?
I thi- I believe that waiver also includes, um, relief from some of the landscaping island requirements. Again, in this area, but not the entirety of it. It would just be the, the southern section that wraps around and is, um. I just wanted the record to be clear what, what is included in that waiver.
And Rick said, use the word variance. I think it's a waiver.
It's two waivers, right. They're both waivers, yes.
And if I, if I might, um, to address the sidewalk issue. You're finished with your statements, right?
Yes, those are, I just wanted, for clarity purpose, I just wanted, you know, make sure that we always put the two waivers.
Can I just, just to respond to Rick's question regarding indemnification? So the operative chart, um, article in the code is Article Seven, Chapter fourteen, Chapter two fourteen. And it's sidewalk maintenance, removal of snow, ice and debris. And there's no require, there's no indemnification requirement in that article. But there is a requirement that the abutting property owner, um, to a sidewalk needs to remove snow and ice and any debris that's on the sidewalk.
I had, as a judge for twenty-seven years, I had so many issues in terms of sidewalk, uh, maintenance after a snowplow comes through. You know, it's a matter of reasonable conduct, uh, anyway. You can't have people standing out there shoveling as soon as the snow, the plow comes through. That's another story.
So we'll blow the sidewalk? So I think from the start, we've, we've continually testified it. We want to be a good neighbor and we're gonna come and do what we can to fit in and do what's appropriate. So we'll, we'll take this south side deal and then jump the votes in.
Okay. Alright, so with.
With that, I would just ask.
Alright, so with. Okay. Alright, entertain a, entertain a motion to close the public hearing? Okay. Seconded by who?
Public. I mean, uh.
Okay. Alright, all in favor? Aye, okay. Alright, so close the public hearing. With that, we have the two waivers that we need to discuss at this point. So the first one is for the pole heights. Entertain a motion to approve, approve the waiver for the two-foot pole height. Okay, motion's made and seconded, all in favor? Aye, okay. The second is for the, uh, dimensional issues in the parking lot within the, um, uh, the, yeah, well, not employee, but the, um, uh, the, in, to use the inventory parking lot. Entertain a motion to allow the reduction, uh, in dimensional requirements within that side according to the plan. Okay, motion made, say it all in favor? Aye. So the motion carries. Okay, so with that. I already did that. So we've dwindled down the, I guess, all the loose end items here. I guess staff has a, a list of conditions that need to be met. Uh, if we propose to have a draft put together for a, um, conditional approval, I guess?
I thi- I think that's appropriate. I do think that we should, um, allow time for the applicant to make a submission with the changes as discussed, particularly with regard to the, uh, sidewalk. And give John the opportunity to review that. But, um, I don't see an issue, you know, unless, unless we come back and I've got a resolution and John's got a list of issues that says we can't vote on this tonight, I, I think that it would be appropriate.
So let's leave it, let's leave it at this, at this point. So the applicant will make a, a submission, uh, addressing all the, you know, any of the loose end items that need to be, as many of them that, that can be addressed on paper currently. Submit that to the professional staff. Once we receive it, this item will be put back on the agenda. And the planner will, um, propose a, uh, draft resolution to the board for that meeting. If everybody's in favor of that, I'll entertain a mo- motion for somebody to approve that.
Bruce, before you, I'm sorry, before you, um, would that be authorization for me to draft the, uh, resolution and a negative declaration as well?
Sorry, yes, negative deck as well.
When do we have to make the submission by to make sure that you?
Well, we could leave it, we could leave it in your hands and then whatever, whenever, whenever it hits the town. Whatever meeting that, you know, that next meeting that would be allowed to be put on, that would be the next meeting. So, instead of rushing it, my suggestion is, address everything as best you can before you make the submission so that when you come back the next time, there's no loose ends, so we can just be done with it.
We'll work together. We'll, I'll have, I'll give, I'll give John some of the sidewalk information that I know from what I've done working with Malcolm's office, like, and Karen. So that we can get a plan ahead of time that, that meets everybody's, like, requirements before they, like, submit. And then, just out of curiosity, where are you with the health department?
It's in review, so everything's designed, um, but it's just in review, so we're okay with that as a condition of approval. And then any other comments outside of the sidewalk? I know there's been outstanding, um, CPL comments with demo permits and those things. We would expect that to be a condition of approval.
Yes, correct.
At some point, I mean, before this, um, John's office will issue a, a comment memo. And that will be what is referenced as, uh, any outstanding conditions.
So just to clarify, uh, I guess, some of the issues still outstanding in the review letters can be adopted as, as conditions of approval.
Conditional items.
Which specific items are we expected to address with this next, recently?
Between the next submission, um, the sidewalk on the, the southern side of Smithtown Road and any other changes that that, you know, and just incorporating that into the site plan. I don't think that there's anything else.
Well, the changes with the landscaping.
We hadn't, uh, discussed that, the, the changes in the landscaping.
Regarding which landscaping are we talking about? Are you talking about on the southern border?
Yes.
Next to the rental property?
The, uh, everybody, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't see any, I think we, we discussed it during the pre-meeting. I don't think there's anything really that needs to get addressed in that.
Okay, so you're fine with it?
Yeah, I think we're, I think, I think they, they added the additional, they added the additional screening. I think we're okay with that at this point. Okay, so with that, all right, so we need a motion to, basically that whole plan we had just talked about. Okay, yeah, so for the resolution and a negative, but, so we made a motion, seconded by. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Alright. So, alright, you're welcome. Okay.
Take care.
Next item on the agenda this evening is a discussion regarding a site plan and special use permit for a Verizon wireless communication facility.
Good evening. Scott Olson on behalf of Verizon Wireless. This is for, uh, Nydell Road, this one, right?
Yeah, this one's for Nydell Road, yeah, sorry, I didn't specify. Forgot, you have three, you have three things on this evening.
I appreciate you being three in a row. So we were here last in April and, you know, we were looking to build a hundred and twenty-foot tower and the board said, can you go out and do the balloon test? Which we did publicly noticed and we sent in that balloon, the results of the balloon test. It was in May or so. I don't know if you had a chance to review it. Uh, I think your consultants did, so I saw some letters. And I, I agree with your consultants, this is a, the visual impacts are very minimal. In fact, we took sixty-four, I think we took more pictures, but I think the report shows sixty-four pictures. Of all the pictures we took, only seven basically showed the tower and only parts of the tower. And so the simulations are in here. It was not visible from the rail trail at any of the five locations or so that we looked at. So, um, but, yeah, so only seven visible locations, so we think that was very positive. A four-hundred-and-twenty-foot tower, we view this as a pretty well-sighted location. So we were just, he asked if it's ready, could we set a public hearing and make the referral to the county if it's necessary? I'm not sure if it is or not.
I believe this was already sent to the county, correct?
Oh, yes, you got me the information. I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah, so, okay. So, yeah, I guess at this point that'd be the next logical step. The only other thing we didn't do is we didn't, um, we didn't get a wireless consultant at this point.
We had identified on the first memo whether or not you.
Yeah, I think we discussed, I mean, the last meeting, we did discuss hiring somebody, but we just didn't have a name at the, at that meeting. Alright, something that we'll need to do, I guess, in the near future.
I mean, we, I, I hate to talk about multiple applications at once, but we do have other Verizon applications before us and we can have.
That's why I was saying it too. We need to do all three, yeah.
If you don't have a name, I mean, we've worked with different, well, not worked with, they've been on, they represent all municipalities. And in fact, uh, one of the attorneys that was just here, she represents the city of Beacon.
Jennifer Gray.
And they just, and I have an application pending before them and they, I can certainly throw the name out there. He's never worked for us, but his name is, um, William Johnson.
Yeah, we're using him in Hyde Park too.
Hyde Park, except, I'm sorry, Hyde Park.
There you go.
You know, he's a former RIT.
I'll send you his contact information.
He's retired now, but he's doing this. So, yeah, actually, we're using there too.
I know, you forget all your ta- all, where all these are.
My wife always says if you had one attached to you, you'd leave a problem.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I tell you what, if you, why don't you just send it to Malcolm? That's fine. And then he can forward it to the board members.
Yeah, just so we can get that.
Well, you, we've been using him up in, um, well, he, up in Hyde Park for several applications. He's very, very good. Timely, responsive.
Okay.
And it's hard to find, it's hard to find people that are, you know, like, independent.
Not already working for that.
Right.
To work for the municipalities and stuff.
Right, yeah, I was gonna say, it's that, our last consultant, I think, we're starting to have concerns toward it then because we weren't sure where he stood, um, in terms of the industry itself, so.
No, he, this guy is, this guy's totally independent, very good too.
So we're, alright, so we have, um, okay, so, I mean, we'll get some information regarding, um, regarding the consultant. So I guess at this point, is really, I think that's all we had. So we need to set the public hearing, uh, which would be seventeenth of July, yeah. So, the July seventeenth acceptable?
As far as I can tell.
Okay.
I'll be here. Someone will be here.
Somebody will be here, okay. So a motion, uh, to set the public hearing on July the seventeenth. Motion's made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Okay, so. That's just the one. The other, the other two are just. Okay. Alright, so I guess we're, we're pretty much done with that application? Alright, so we're gonna move on to the, um, site plan special use permit for Verizon Wireless Kent Road, uh, small cell wireless facility.
And that is, for the record, Scott Olson, I represent Verizon Wireless. That's a new application you have before you that we submitted a month or so ago. And it is a, what we call a small cell facility. It's a small cell facility as defined by the FCC. We're talking about putting in a wooden utility pole. I think it's forty-three feet tall. Two, three-foot antenna, so we're gonna be at about forty-six point two feet total height, so under fifty feet. That makes this small cell under the federal regulations. And small cells do not provide the same coverage as what we're doing over in Nydell Road. It's really just intended to kind of provide a, a smaller footprint, like what we call spot coverage. We have some capacity issues there. It's fairly residential in the area, so the utility pole tends to be the best, you know, best visually and best for us if we can do it. Technologically speaking, we can. technologically speaking, and we can, so. We provided some visual, visual analysis in there to show you what it would look like. It's a little taller than some of your utility poles here, but not by much, I think, standard utility pole here is about 40 feet, give or take. You know, it's a bit taller. As with all our applications, we provided our engineers' review that this would be fully compliant with the FCC. We don't build sites that are not, but we provided the documentation anyway. Just one other thing, I'll stop, but, we can't put these on other existing utility poles. And in fact, I think if you, you're looking at right there, if you kind of look at it, I think that's C2, there's a little picture there, and the existing utility poles are 40, 45, 40 feet tall, but all of them at the top have all of the CHD and E stuff. So, it would push us so far down, we'd be, you know, 30 feet or 35 feet, and that's, you can see there are trees there that are tall than that, and that's why we have to just, we've gotta get to the 45-foot level, fortunately, so we tried to do that, but we couldn't, so it's a new pole.
Okay.
I don't have any questions.
Yeah, yeah? Yeah, just as, just out of curiosity, is there any other, instead of putting these on wood poles, has Verizon and any other areas put up something that's more, more like just a, more like a flagpole type of scenario?
We've done flagpoles before.
Yeah, I know, like on the larger, you know, they do some of those larger ones, I mean, they're, they're, you know, they're scattered up and down Route 9. But, you know, obviously, this is, you know, not to that, not to that scale, but they do something similar in, in this aspect.
For the small cells, no.
Okay.
You know, we've done at Town of Kipsey, I think, a while ago, we did a flagpole there, I think it's 90 feet tall at the town hall. You know, the problem is that, the problem, well, we feel like this fits in with the, you know, if you have 40-foot utility poles, I mean, we source the poles from the same exact companies that the utility companies. So it's gonna be very similar.
Yeah.
Yes, we have equipment on it, but, you know, you see these three gang transformers on some of these poles, so it's not really that, we feel it's not that much different.
Yeah.
The flagpole, it might look a little bit out of place.
Okay.
But.
Yeah, I just, I'll throw out the question, just out of curiosity, you know, just if there's other options, that's all. Yeah, okay. All right, might as well run through what the consultants on both of these, well, let's start with this application, I guess, the Kent Road, and, go ahead, Malcolm.
Largely, what I was identifying, I mean, you have the visual impact study to look at. From the research that I've done, this still falls within the special perm, the same special permit that the previous application would fall under, and it is pretty specifically geared to, I guess, larger-scale projects. And so there's a lot in there, like, looking for a decommission report, looking for, you know, mandating a balloon test. But I don't see anywhere in the code that gives us the latitude to waive those requirements. I don't know that a balloon test would be practical here, and we have the visual impact analysis that would result from the balloon test. So, I don't know that a balloon test is practical here, but I also don't know legally how we would get around that requirement, if that makes sense.
Yeah, just in regard to the balloon test, I know we did approve one of these, which actually was on a utility pole down in Chelsea.
Right.
And we didn't do, I know we didn't do a balloon test down there.
Was it on an existing facility?
It's on an existing pole, yeah.
So that's what, in the code-
Or was it a replacement of an existing pole?
They did replace, they, they did replace the pole on that one.
Usually it's a little replaceable.
I think in the special permit, the balloon test is not required if you're co-locating on an existing piece of infrastructure.
Right.
Only if you're putting something in, but the language is pretty broad, and I, it applies here. So, I, I would defer to Jim, I don't, I don't know exactly how to handle this.
So, with respect to those issues, I mean, Barbara and I have had this discussion for years, you know, our cell tower, current, the current provisions for cell towers in the code are dated, the telecommunications act has been updated, has been amended several times. Most recently with respect to self, small, this, small, cell tower facilities, which this is. And, you know, so, I think, basically due to federal preemption, I think, you know, notwithstanding what the code says, I think we have a lot of latitude to comply with the federal requirements under the telecommunications act. Obviously, if the board, the town board, you know, had amended it, it would be, it would have been better, but I think we have to do a little bit of ad hoc here in this case, and I totally agree that a balloon test isn't warranted, decommissioning plans, you know, fall zones, you know, 'cause it really is a utility pole for the most part. And, this is in town right-of-way?
It is, yes, exactly.
And, is Verizon Wireless a transportation corporation?
They are, don't know if they are, I'd say they're transportation corporation law.
Okay.
I, I, I'll look at that.
Okay, I know Verizon is.
Yes, they are.
And, so, you know, 'cause that's the thing, is this planning board doesn't review the installation of Central Hudson poles, Verizon poles, Cablevision poles. Anything that's in the, in the town right-of-way is actually beyond the jurisdiction typically of the planning board. They're, they're regulated by what are called franchise agreements between the parent companies and either the town or the state regarding the use of the right-of-way. So it's really more of a right-of-way issue than it is a planning issue. Where there are changes to the code, it's more a, just a visual impact study on the aesthetics of what's going on a pole. And that's something that the transportation corporation law allows a municipality to do, be it Verizon Wireless, or Central Hudson, or, you know, things of that nature. But, you know, the town of Wapangir really doesn't have much to that end regarding the use of our franchises, but other municipalities have. And, you know, with, with the advent of 5G and also with respect to, you know, some wireless facilities, you know, there's, larger cities are getting more, more involved. There's, down in, like in New York City, and I think in White Plains, there's companies that have come in and doing different lighting fixtures, street lighting fixtures, which have built-in Wi-Fi. And, so there's an agreement, you know, where, and again, that's through, you know, the, it's not necessarily through the planning board, but, you know, the, the governing council comes up with an agreement and approves the, the aesthetic of those, of those light fixtures and stuff, so. You know, that's kind of what, eventually, if these things are rolled out on a more broad scale, that's typically what you would see. And, you know, the, the city of Beacon has, has come up with a new small cell facilities, I was just actually looking at it online. So, I will reach out to Jennifer Gray and talk to her a little bit, but, you know, I think, in the short term, that, you know, because of the changes in the small, in telecommunications acts, also, you know, the shot clock for a, a small cell facility is much, it's a less, the time to review those facilities, those applications is shorter than a typical large tower. So, you know, implicit in that is less hoops to jump through, and, you know, and things of that nature.
So can we waive the balloon test on that small?
I think we can, yes. You know, I think that's, you know, 'cause, it's, you know, you're gonna, I mean, a, a, a visual impact that, that was submitted, I think is sufficient.
Right, it's basically, right, it's basically, it's basically gonna be a pole, that's at the bottom line, so.
Yeah, I mean, so, you know, so the, you know, the other question of, and then one of the things that, you know, the applicant, that the planning board can kind of look at is, you know, the massing of the antennas, you know, I think the applicant, if he hasn't, if they haven't done so already, is, kind of give a rationale as to, you know, why the, why it's at that height, why it looks, you know, as it is, and then, you know, the other thing that becomes probably as germane to this board is the, you know, the, the associated facilities, the, you know, the connections and, you know, any, I don't know, how many boxes we got on the ground.
Yeah, actually, none, none on the ground, for these small, we, we actually put them on poles.
Yeah, okay.
You know, I can't get what they have, but they've got some electrical stuff, they got some switches.
Right.
And.
You know, I, I think the one in Chelsea, didn't that have, did that have something on it?
No, it had a box, there's a, there's a, down low, there is a box on the, on the side of the pole, actually, it might be, might be two, it might be an electrical disconnect and the, the electronics to run the antenna.
Yeah, I mean, so that's one of the things, is some of that, you know, to the, to the extent you put it more to the ground, or that, less, you know, less obstru, obtrusive to the view shed.
Yes.
And then.
So the, all right, so, I mean, so, basically, okay, so you feel comfortable we do have latitude to waive a balloon test?
And then, the, and I'll, I'll talk to, talk to council later about some of the, some of the issues regarding assessment after it's installed. 'Cause that's one of the things I had a discussion with the assessor, as to how these things get on the backswing.
Always get paid.
These things are very, these things are very valuable, yes.
Well, the, no, the bigger issue is that there's no grid associate.
Yeah.
Telephone, so telephone poles get, the town assessor doesn't do the assessment on the telephone calls, the public service commission does.
Okay.
So this kind of falls into this different area as to who, who does the assessment of the evaluation.
I mean, it was the taxing agency.
The town is the taxing agency.
So it's done through the public service commission.
Right, 'cause the, 'cause the utilities, so the utilities have to create what's called a rate base, which is all the poles, all the transformers, all the lines, and that's, that gets submitted to the, annually gets submitted to the public service commission. And then, they use that information to generate the assessment of their equipment in each, each respective municipality.
I did make a comment regarding the RF specialist, I'm assuming that, as with the previous application, you'd like to?
Yeah, we, yeah.
Reach out to and have-
Yeah, we'll reach out to a wireless, wireless consultant just to confirm the information which has been submitted to the board. So that as well.
And, do we feel we're in a position to set a, a public hearing?
Yeah, I believe we did that the last time, I believe we did have a public hearing regarding that down in Chelsea. So we did have a public hearing, I think we, we probably should. Should let the, the residents, you know, have a say, if they have questions and concerns, rather have them put on the table instead of, you know, you know, having them ignored, so. So, yeah, we definitely will do that. Do we feel that this is close enough to, to have a public hearing?
I, I don't want to speak for, for Pete, from my end, I, I'm not expecting any additional information, we have the visual impact assessment. That's primarily what I would review in this case. I don't think that the plan is going to change substantially even with engineering comments.
The only thing that I would, I, I don't, the, the comment most likely that will come from the public is, is this needed? And, you know, so they've got that submission.
Then that's gonna fall back to our consultant.
Correct.
That's gonna have to, that's gonna have to confirm the, confirm the status, so, so I guess at this point it may be a little premature to go ahead and schedule for that particular.
I mean, we could schedule, I mean.
Yeah, schedule it, but then we're gonna carry it open for possibly a period, right.
We're in the same position with Didel though.
Yeah, it's true.
He might be able to get to it, though.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could schedule, I mean, it's, we're a month, we're 17, you know, the 17th, so we're a month away. If we don't have the report by then, then we're just adjourning it to the following, probably to the following month anyway, so.
I mean, you could at least get comments regarding the aesthetics.
Right, yeah, so, if the rest of the boards are in agreeance with me, entertain a motion to set the public hearing for this project for the July 17th meeting as well. Okay, motion's made, seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay.
Do you want to waive the balloon test?
Oh, yeah, and, yeah, before we move on, motion to waive the balloon test.
No second.
Motion's made, seconded, all in favor? Aye. All right, a motion carries.
Bruce, I had something just before we move on.
Go ahead.
So, Scott, one of John's comments was in regards to boundary survey, property survey, or, I mean, how do we ensure that the pole's gonna be within, you know, the right-of-way and not on private, like, property, I mean, it's using tax map, using tax map, you know, like data for now, right?
Yeah, and, and we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead, we saw the comment, and I saw authorization from the client to go ahead and do the survey.
Okay. Okay, all right.
So we'll have it out there.
And then the only other, it seems like the only other thing, and it's, and it's gonna be for the next application too, is, you know, like site distance, if there's, I know it's just a pole, but then you got, you know, the cabinet on the pole, so you got to take a look at, you know, like site distance, if it's gonna-
Yeah, I've got that, I'm, I'm sorry, I've asked our visual folks to put that together.
Okay.
For both.
They're both on town roads, right? I mean, county road is-
Yes, both on town roads.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so that closes out this application, and we're all good with comments, okay.
Scott, do you know, does DOT, state DOT or county have any standards for these?
State DOT, yeah, I don't know, I done some stuff for DOT several years ago.
Okay.
I think they were very similar, like 50, I think it's just keeping it at 50 feet or below, but. Just trying to save myself work. Yeah, no, I understand.
Okay, all right, so let's move on to the next application, which is a site plan special use permit for Verizon small cell wireless facility at Spook Hill Park.
Correct, so, yeah, Scott Olson for Verizon Credit. I know.
Still.
So this is essentially the identical design, just in a different location. What is it, I think it was at the corner of? Yeah, in Spook Hill, yeah, exactly, so it's not in the park itself, but it'll get some service to the park. We try to stay at parks, I think we need legislative approval for that, it takes a while. But, this, same exact design, the wooden utility pole, again, 43 feet tall or so, antenna will get it to 46.2 feet, so we're under 50 feet, so it stays within the small cell definition. Same equipment, same antennas, just different location, same supporting materials we have for it, you know, so.
Okay. All right, so with that, again, I guess the staff's comments are pretty much the same thing?
They're almost identical, we've sorted a lot of them out, I'm assuming that we are contacting the same RF specialist and having them review this application in addition to the other two. If you would like, you can waive the requirement for the balloon test, we have the, the visual impact analysis. As far as aesthetic impacts, the, the only difference between this application and the previous is that it is, you know, with, within relative close proximity to the park, as opposed to the other which had no listed, you know, sites where we, where we would look more closely at aesthetic impact. So it is relatively close to the park, we received supplemental information from the applicant as far as their visual impact on their EAF. But, the project looks roughly exactly the same, is in the right-of-way. Just like the last one, it's, it's, it's also closely, you know, it's, it's in close proximity to other telephone poles of a similar height.
All right, so, um, okay, so there's really nothing we need to address there. So, Pete, anything?
Same thing as the last one, yeah, pretty much.
Okay.
Site distance.
Same thing, we, so it's worth for both, yes, exactly.
Site distance and survey to show the, the exact location.
I think this one had a fire hydrant that was fairly close.
Right next to it, pretty close.
Right, so just, you know, work, work with the fire department and make sure that, that it's okay.
Okay, all right, so you guys are all, pretty much, we're all on board with those, what needs to go here, so, at this point, entertain a motion to, to waive the balloon test on this project as well. Okay, all in favor? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Alright, and this one as well, we can schedule a public hearing for July the seventeenth. Entertain a motion for that.
Second.
Motion's made. Say it all in favor? Aye. Okay.
This, uh, regarding Seeker, um, I'm under the impression that these applications were both unlisted actions, but that they have relatively, you know, it, it would not necessarily make sense for us to pursue a coordinated action. Um, my recommendation would that we proceed with Seeker in an uncoordinated action, let anybody else who might be interested...
On both of these projects, yeah.
I guess the other question is, is anybody else required?
I took a look at that after I saw your comment, and, um, I, no, I don't believe so. We listed the building department on, on that, but they're not mandated, it's a discretionary approval, so they're not involved in the agency.
My, my recommendation would be that we pursue an uncoordinated review. I just wanted that on the record, so, you know, this is essentially me saying we, we don't really need to circulate for lead agency.
And there's no tree clearing or anything for these, right?
No.
Yeah. Alright, um, so we probably vote on that anyway, regardless.
Yes.
The motion to, um, to proceed with this under Seeker as an uncoordinated review.
Make that motion.
Okay. Alright, motion's made. Say it all in favor? Aye. Okay, and that applies to both projects, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright.
And just one question, generally, any, any more of these coming down the pipeline? What do you think?
Not that I'm aware of, but I'm the last one to know usually. Um, no, but I, I could certainly ask the question, so that when, I'll have the engineer here for the hearing, so we can ask that question.
Yeah, no, cause I mean, you know, we, we need to make revisions to our codes, you know, and, you know, for the procedures.
Yeah, and like you said, Beacon did that follow in there, as obviously.
Yeah, okay.
No, I, I don't know, like I said, I am the last to know.
Okay, I know how that goes.
Yeah, I know.
Small towers are so much better.
Alright.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. We'll see you the seventeenth.
Okay, we'll see you then, thank you. Alright. Okay, so our next item on the agenda this evening is a conceptual review for Randolph School Sugar Shack and Lean Twos.
Hi. I'm Josh.
Hi, Josh.
Hi, Josh.
Hi, Josh.
Nice to know. Last time the Randolph School was up here, it was probably about seven years ago. Just wanna let you know, that was before my time.
Josh, can we, can we just get your first and last and your address for the record?
Sure, uh, first name Joshua, last name Kaplan. Uh, my home address is forty-nine Harrell Drive in Gold Spring, and I represent the Randolph School here at twenty-four sixty-seven ninety.
Okay.
So, um, I imagine lots of you have driven by before, driven by?
Oh, yeah, we all know it.
Yeah, have you ever been in?
I haven't.
Yeah, excellent. So it's an uncommon tale, not some more common tale. One of the things that I picked up on is that aesthetic and the way that people look and feel in this community is something that's clearly important.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me, can we keep it down on the back, please? Thank you.
And thematic so far this evening, um, and some of the things that we think about and that we envision, um, some things that we already do are things that we hope have minimal impact on the community at large, um, in terms of its interference with the things look and feel like, but that also expands our capacity and our ability to bring the things that we do and perhaps you into campus to come and visit us. Um, so I shared a bunch of materials, things that look like this, this is in case it looks familiar to you. Um, great, and if not, the things that are in here kind of detail some of the ways in which we've been living and learning, as we like to put it, at Randolph. I want to say that I am here, um, for two specific purposes. One is quite overdue, and one is in advance. The overdue part, I want to acknowledge, has a lot to do with probably lots of things you hear a lot about, which is, oh, things over the last few years have been hard. That's not, not the case. My own ignorance, the small nature of our organization, and the fact that some of the units fall below a certain square footage. But we've come here to a place with lots of generous support to, um, make sure that we're in the good graces of everybody here that cares about the safety and wellbeing of everybody participating. With that said, our Lean Twos, um, which are three world structures, they look like this here. Um, our outdoor classrooms, and the way that they function are very much like your indoor classroom. This is kindergarten, looks like kindergarten, right?
Yeah.
The only difference is it's downstairs.
Right.
And for us, and I'm not sure how much you know about our community in particular, but these were instrumental in our ability to do something that other people weren't able to do, and that was remain in school, in person, one hundred percent of the time throughout the pandemic. Um, we're still doing so today, and part of that experience, well, has informed kind of what we'd like to do next. So first and foremost, we're asking permission and consideration on the Lean Twos that do already exist on campus. More than welcome to come and visit, like I said, anytime. But the other thing that we're also asking for consideration in is, um, pancakes? Pancakes?
Pancakes.
Pancakes, hello. Maple syrup. Um, maple syrup is a form of alchemy. Um, it is a wonderful and magnificent science that, um, we can all relate to through pancakes, but kids at the Randolph School can relate to it through so many different ways. And a sugar shack is the traditional northeast, I don't know if you know this, but you're in a unique region, that maple sugar, maple syrup comes just from the northeast of North America. And, um, a sugar shack is the traditional building in which you boil the sap and make the syrup. We've been doing that for over forty years outdoors uncovered, and we're looking to legitimize our operation, if you will, and take it to the north. The, uh, Lean Twos themselves came from a company in Vermont called Jamaica Cottage Shop. They, uh, were able to figure out how to put these things together and get them here for us in time to reopen school promptly. Um, they're beautiful, like I showed you in the photos, and these same folks are interested in putting together a, the sugar shack unit that would match, um, the other buildings on our campus aesthetically, um, not be visible from ninety, but certainly would be to anybody coming into campus or perhaps exploring in Reese Park in the wintertime when there's no foliage and you can see over the creek to us. You might have a lot of questions, I could go on and on if you haven't noticed, but you could, it's, um, I don't want to keep you.
I'm up very late, you're not keeping me?
Okay, great. Um, but are there any other things, you know, on your mind?
So, now, I mean, the, the, the sugar shack that you're proposing, how large are we, what size structure are we talking about?
Sixteen by twenty-four, which is three hundred and twenty-four square.
Okay, alright, and then each of the Lean Twos, those are?
Ninety-six square feet, eight by twelve.
They're eight by twelve, okay, alright.
Sugar shack would look, uh, like that, less the gentleman, I don't know them.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, alright. And, um, within the, within the sugar shack, there's, I guess you're gonna, they're gonna install like a, an evaporator?
Yes.
Okay, alright, so that's gonna take up most of the space, or?
No, it would take up...
It's gonna take up, you know, like a portion of it, and then they're gonna use the rest as classroom space? I guess to kind of do demonstrations?
Exactly, so, yes, the evaporator itself would only take up...
About like the table.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, okay, yeah, alright. Okay.
And that's just in the season of maple sugaring, which is late winter. Um, the rest of the year, it would be a functional space for, for all sorts of programming.
Alright, and the, the Lean Twos that are currently, they're, again, they're out of sight, they're behind the main building?
Correct.
Down, down the hill?
They are behind the main building, um...
I think you can see one or two from ninety in the winter when the leaves are off.
When they're all down.
Right now, it's, they're probably hidden from view.
Yeah.
Kinda to the left and west of the main school building.
Yeah, the south side, you might see one.
Okay, alright, and then the, the, um, the sugar shack is gonna be also to the back, or?
To the far rear, well, less, you know, the space.
So you don't have a, you don't have a, a plan, like a site plan, that shows the exact locations?
I do, and I ran over here at it, like...
Yeah, I didn't, I don't remember. Yeah, I don't remember if it was in the packet or not, I kinda, I, I kinda looked at it really quick.
I will re-provide it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, you saw me.
What are they here for? Just to, they have to do a site? Just like a minor site plan?
I hope so.
Okay.
So this is the one that might be visible?
This one here? Okay.
Cause they could probably show these.
I think if you put those on the other side.
Right.
Yep, yeah, and that's the, so that's what the sugar shack is, yeah, this is the, hold on, this is the new building, right?
This is the new building, yeah.
Yeah, that was the one that was, uh, the last time you got, well, yeah, 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 somebody from the, somebody from the school was here for this one.
I did get, uh, the suggestion that I ought to pull those people back out and find somebody.
And he's commercial, cause he's a school.
Yeah.
No, I know, but...
Sugar shack.
Yeah.
But because he's commercial, yeah.
Or, yeah, or at least if you can get the CAD file from them.
Yeah.
And then get, and then get another, and then even if you use a different engineer, they should, they should be able to release that to you to give to the, to whoever you hire, um, you know, to make the, right, they can import it and then they can add the additional items. So, um, I'm assuming this is gonna have to go for the full submittal for a revised site plan?
Well, it needs a revised site plan, so the reason I brought Josh here as a conceptual, he just had a big one for that new building in the back, which was involved, and then I think your, um, that outdoor theater. So, the Lean Twos are small, and they're dotted more on the wooded side, and then the sugar shack's way in the back, so I thought, because you've just done a big site plan, I'd ask, let him ask the board how involved you wanted to be to add these items.
Yeah, um... Yeah, the only, yeah, I, I, yeah, I, I would say that I really didn't want to get too involved with it.
It just has to be memorialized.
Yeah.
On, on a site plan.
Right, because, you know, just that there's an approval on it. Um, cause again, it's not gonna really, cause it's basically just the students that are there that are using these things. It's not like we have an increase in, um, you know, an increase in intensity on the property. So...
When I do, you know, like I mentioned, I do have someone presently who's gotten that original file, and will put these things in, so that when I do submit.
Does he have to do an EAF?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I would, I would prepare a short EAF. Um, I, I don't want to speak out of turn, I want to add up, I know that you'll probably fall below the square footage of, of activity, um, so it's probably a type-two action, but, uh, with the submission, I'll, I'll double-check that. If it is an unlisted action, I'm not expecting any kind of substantial disturbance, so.
Yeah.
And pardon my ignorance, EAF?
EAF stands for the environmental assessment form.
How much, um, space we're taking?
Well, it's gonna be some generic questions. Look for the short form, don't, you, you don't need to fill out the long form, there's two different tabs.
There's one on the wall right up there, right?
Your architect will be able to do that.
But you could also Google, you know, uh, New York State DEC, uh, EAF short form, you'll get the PDF, it'll have you fill it out.
It's in the packet on our website for site plan.
Okay.
So it's right there, you have a choice of short and long, so you can throw half a bit away, cause long's fat.
Short, got it.
Yeah.
I think it's four pages, right?
Yeah, I think so. It's just like a check, yes or no.
Okay.
Um, and that'll just let us know if there's any red flags that we need to look out for. Um, are you expecting to cut down any trees as a part of this?
That's not something we do.
Okay, um, then, then I imagine...
It's a great question, I'm, I'm glad to hear you ask others.
Well, I mean, most of them are already up, I didn't know if you were clearing anything for the sugar shack, but I don't, um, without tree clearing, the, the most common restriction that would be applied to you through Seeker does not apply. Um, it's, it would just give you a window on when you could cut those trees down, but you're not looking to. Um, so, uh, but, but do give us the AF short form as part of the record.
Sure.
Amend this existing site plan that you have to show the existing and the proposed.
It's really, it seems, it seems to be very minimal, that's why.
The only question I have, and it's not really related, is the sugar shack, the, it's wood-fired, is that the?
Wood-fired, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, usually they are.
Yeah, that's what I figured, so.
They're the attorney.
Yes. No, I was just asking, cause, you know, there wouldn't be any, there's no utilities going to it, right?
Oh, no, definitely, yeah, we're like, yeah, our friends, they know us very well. Yeah, there are no utilities, no electric, um, yeah.
Yeah, so there's really no need, I mean, they'll, you know, they'll have everything they need down there for the, you know, you know, the, the excess heat from the evaporator will, you know, provide heat in the building.
The children at the Randolph School also have all the attire necessary to be outdoors and do things.
Cause that's gonna require a permit, though.
Yes, but, um, we're, we're already in conversation and partnership.
Okay, um, yes, I mean, it's, seems like, seems like you're on the right track. Um, I don't, I don't know, anybody else on the board have any concerns? I mean, it seems to be pretty straightforward, what you're looking to do, I mean, um, yeah, no, I mean, you know, I, I personally don't see any issue with it.
Great, well, thank you for your support, and I'll make sure to get those pieces together and done.
If you have any issues, just give me a call.
I want to have something over to find you, please.
I know, you do.
Thank you so much.
Okay, alright, have a good evening.
Good night, Josh.
Alright, so, one more item here, we have a, um, let's see, we have an extension request for Myers Run LLC subdivision. They're looking to seek their second ninety-day extension, um, where is it here? Uh, the extension would begin January, uh, July, July second, and run through September first. Um, so at this point, entertain a motion to grant the extension?
Make motion.
Motion's made. Second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so with that, we're at the end of the agenda. Is there anything else that we need to discuss this evening? No? Okay, so seeing none, um, entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, motion's made. Second, it all in favor?
Send John some information on that.
Alright, so we're done.